I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Roll call, please.
Slattery. Slattery absent. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Casadis.
Here.
Casadis here. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue. Donahue absent. Holly. Holly absent. Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald here. Hill.
Here.
Hill here. Meck. Meck absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Cantalouzoman. Cantalouzoman absent. Eight present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and myself out.
Yeah. Never mind.
Next is the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of December the 10th, 2019. That's a motion by Alderman Carr, and a second by Alderman Fernwald. Any questions?
Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Casadis.
Casadis, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Eight ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Public comment.
Hi, my name is Howard Copari, Community Development Manager. I'm here to present to everyone at the city council the new building official that was recently hired. He actually started yesterday morning, so I'm here to present Mr. Sandino, and he'll speak a couple of words on his behalf.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, panel. My name is Ahmed Aish Sandino. I'll be your new building official. My office is open to any of your questions or anything, any comments that you have. I'll be willing to answer as soon as possible. Well, I started yesterday, so I'm eager to and willing to work with you, every one of you, and try to do the best for the city of Blue Island. So, you're welcome anytime at the office, and I'll be emailing everybody information so we can be in contact with either email or text at any time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Carol DePace Green. "Blue Island Taxpayers Are Not Treated Fairly, And All Of These Dishonest Activities And Bleeding Must Stop." Make no mistake, 2019 was a terrible year for Blue Island taxpayers as a direct result of Blue Island elected officials' missteps. Our Blue Island elected officials have made many wrong turns, from the Tahos to the $15,000 earmarked for a conflict of interest Sergio Acosta investigation. That money would be better spent paying for the Caterpillar. Numerous poor financial decisions, pilfered wasting millions of dollars, opted out of minimum wage, increasing water rates above Blue Island's minimum wage hourly rate. During the last four decades, we Blue Island taxpayers have witnessed the slow systematic draining of Blue Island's city treasury, as evidenced by growing debt. Thirty million and climbing, inter-fund borrowing from different funds, tax anticipation warrants, sales for bonds for Jawa to pay debts and lawsuits. The last set of lawsuits, millions. Blue Island has always needed a balanced budget and a line item audit, not appropriations. Blue Island needs treasury reports written by Treasurer Bellato, city collector reports, finance reports, complete finance committee reports, along with checks and balances. Abuse of power, hiring an additional legislative council and law firm for the Restore Blue Island Political Party at Blue Island taxpayer expense. Again, Fred, I want to compliment you for foregoing your Alderman pay. Hopefully, that helps offset the payments that are going to Montana and Welch. I'm not thoroughly convinced that they should be receiving any payments yet because that conflict of interest complaint has not been ruled on, so we don't have a ruling yet. Putting themselves above Blue Island taxpayers and further draining the Blue Island's treasury. No other community has elected officials that have engaged in such egregious conduct in the history of the state of Illinois. I can't find another community that has a legislative council. If you guys know of one, please let me know, so I can stop saying it, because I don't want to say this if it's inaccurate. But I can't find another municipality in the state of Illinois. Maybe State Representative Kelly Burke, maybe you know of one. You don't? Okay, good. Properties have been gobbled up at bargain basement prices using slick tactics coming as close to without crossing the line as possible by the connected. The Longwood Project, the Chatham Street Bridge, the $10 million low-interest loan for smart meters provide evidence Blue Island will benefit from a dedicated engineer. Rowing $10 million for smart meters and paying it back over 20 years makes about as much sense as buying a car and putting the payments out for 20 years. It's highly unlikely that car will definitely be running 20 years later. The latest Bob Rita-led back-room deal cheated Blue Island out of millions for ambulance and ALS training services, and does not benefit Blue Island, period. We should have gotten $2 million out of Quorum for ambulances and ALS training services for our fire department, and we didn't. While there's always hope, Third Horizon has many moving parts, several puzzle pieces that are simply altogether missing. These are four hospitals that are looking to maybe reconstruct something over there at Metro South. Three out of those four hospitals are failing hospitals. Is the state going to allow three failing hospitals to take over a failed hospital? Would any one of you go in with two other failed entities on any project? The legislation for freestanding ERs was not sent or signed by the governor at the end of the false session. Omitted in its entirety from the legislation were patient protections from surprise bills and price gouging. Medicare Medicaid patients can't use that. The Blue Island Planning Commission, Blue Island Zoning Commission will be unable to approve planning or special use zoning for the facility due to the missing legislation, and the Blue Island Building Department will need to see substantial property improvements for that poorly maintained facility. There's been an all-out concerted effort to drain Blue Island of all assets, and it has negatively impacted Blue Island taxpayers' daily lives. The 2020 new year will bring in the census, a Blue Island remap, with the endless possibility of census tampering to gain home rule. Among several things Blue Island taxpayers want to see are city treasury reports written by Treasurer Bellato, city collector reports, finance reports, checks and balances that have been missing for more than a decade. And more than ever, we need real elected officials who are truly on the side of protecting Blue Island taxpayers and ready to put an end to all of this crazy, because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers that are paying for all of this, and it really needs to stop. So I'm looking forward to 2020 providing better vision, 2020 vision, for everybody so you can really take a good look at what's going on. Robinson Engineering, half a million dollars a year. Blue Island should be in tip-top shape. We're not. A dedicated engineer would cost us $100,000 for the year. A lot more thought needs to be put into the decisions and the decision-making process that's going on here within the city council. Not all these IIIIs and doing the same old thing over and over again, like with the first aid kits that have cost...how much would you guess?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay. Any idea how much they're costing for a year? Because certainly, as you pointed out, Alderman, Alexander, you can buy those in Walmart and refill them yourself. And it will be, it's absolutely OSHA standard and would pass OSHA requirements. We've got to stop just blank check, letting everything just run through. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, enjoy the holidays. Please, put on your thinking hats, think about what you want to see, how you want to save money. Do not use appropriation and budget interchangeably. They're two completely different things. Please, 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 spend our money as frugally as you spend your own. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Alan Stevo. Probably eight years ago, there was a citywide survey taken by the Center for Neighbor Technology. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And recently, the Chair, Alderman Bellato, and his committee said that there was a 10% vacancy rate in the Central Business District. That could be, I haven't checked. But in the survey, overwhelmingly, the people asked for stores like Whole Foods, like Peace Market, you know, things like that, substantial stores where they could shop on a daily or weekly basis. I was going to ask you, who's responsible for posting the council minutes on the website?
City Clerk.
City Clerk. They haven't been posted on the website since June 11th of 2019, just a matter of fact. And I know the residents, they would like to see them posted.
We'll make sure they're...
If at all possible.
Thank you.
City Attorney Burke, it's been asked before about the obstruction of justice in the police department, how it costs the citizens over $2 million. Have you done anything to bring justice to this former deputy police chief who aided in the obstruction of justice and cost the taxpayers this money? Well, I'm asking you to do something about it. Write some letters to Illinois Attorney General, State's Attorney, get the ball moving, because we have to put that behind us, and we want a police department, you know, that we can really count on. And I do stand for the first responders, the good ones. Does any Alderman have any questions of me? Anybody?
No.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Thank you to you and your family. Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, I'll move on to the mayor's business announcements. Again, Alderman Johnson, I don't know if you were here the last time, if not, I'll remind you of this or I'll let you know. I have no objection to what you've been asking for a forensic audit. We're looking at our proposals, and we're bringing up before the whole council and see what the council wants to do once we get the proposals on for a forensic audit. I think the suggestion had been to start with the water fund. That's one announcement. I'm requesting a hearing next month regarding the status of Alderman Alicia Slattery, specifically her residency, and I'll keep you informed, the council informed of that. Third, I'm informing the council, I'm in the process of formation of what's called a Mayor's Advisory Board made of residents of Blue Island. And last, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, on behalf of my family, the City Hall family, and the residents of Blue Island. What really touched me, whether you're familiar with this or not, similar to what the comedian Jerry Lewis used to have and still does after his passing in September on Labor Day weekend in Mexico during this holiday season and every Christmas for the last 20 years, is called a Teleton, Teleton, to raise money for children who have incapacities, physical, primarily physical. And what really touched me regarding seeing that, there was a one 10-year-old little girl, Mexican little girl, who had deformities that you wouldn't believe. But, and I repeat this, she was the most joyous little girl alive. Even though she had the physical deformities, her heart was in the right place. And that's where I think we miss it in life, all of us, including myself, that we don't know what we have, and we let it go like it's nothing. When you see someone like that and all the children, not only in Mexico but all across the world, especially during this holiday season, let's think about that, how blessed we are in our family, our children are, and really think about it, because that's what really is the Christmas spirit, humanity, et cetera. City Clerk, any business?
I do have a couple of things to say this evening. First, there's a phenomenon called the illusory truth effect. It's also known as the validity effect, the truth effect, or the reiteration effect. And according to Wikipedia, it's the tendency to believe false information to be correct after repeated exposure. Every board packet, there's a cash collections receipt that every Alderman gets, every person that gets a board packet. Every single day in the clerk's office, there's deposits made with receipts made by the Blue Island policemen. And here are the reports that every day are available for the finance department, the senior accountant, or the finance director that's available for them. And I really take personal offense to comments from the public, and when...that's the right for the people to come up here and speak, but when elected officials start to believe it, that's the illusory truth effect, and it's got to stop. There's plenty of documentation, plenty of procedures in place that show that cash collections are accurate. Thank you.
Any other business, any bits?
No bits.
City Treasurer, City Treasurer's not here. I think you all should have a copy of what's called fund transfers, the date 12/17/2019 Incorporated. It has unrestricted, restricted, and I think there was copies that the public has of that. First line is approval of inter-fund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. I need a motion for that. Do we have a motion by Alderman Clinker? Do we have a second by Alderman Tom Hawley? Any questions? Roll call.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next is...
I didn't agree with that.
I'm sorry, nine and one. I'm sorry, I did write that down as a no. I apologize.
Next is the cash collection receipts report, and again, no treasurer's announcement. City Attorney?
None.
Committee report, committee development?
There's no report for community development meeting. I gave my report at the last meeting. Under Finance Committee, we have a motion to approve accounts payable for the amount, and it's a corrected amount. There was a mistake in the original, it was a double billing for the health insurance at the end. Out of this, $647,167.46 alone between the health insurance and Lake Shore is over $300,000 of that, is those two big bills. So we need a motion to approve accounts payable, check proof for December 18th, 2019, for $647,167.46.
We have a motion, we have a second by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman.
Just want to state for the record that I will vote in favor of the payables tonight, although I do oppose the retention of Montana and Welch. I don't think it's necessary, but I know we have a legal obligation to pay it, so I will agree with you.
All right. Anybody else? If not, roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
No, because I do not believe that we've been provided with the expenses versus the revenue, and it has not been provided for quite a long time, so for that reason, I'm voting no. And I also would like to add that the reason why we have to have the Montana and Welch is, do other communities, have they had a mayor that purchased Tahos?
We didn't purchase any Tahos. So let's get the facts straight, Alderman.
We're in the middle of it.
Just stating.
Rita, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Eight ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, I have a motion to approve payroll for December 13th, 2019, for $350,861.61.
We have a motion, we have a second by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
No, for the same reasons.
Rita, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck, or excuse me, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Nine ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, ordinance number 2019-059, an ordinance levying taxes for the city of Blue Island for the current fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019. We need a motion.
Get a motion, we have a second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Alderman, you?
Aye. Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
We have our number four here, abatement of $396,606.25 of real estate taxes levied pursuant to ordnance 06-046, and I believe this is from 2006. So it's an abatement of real estate taxes to pull them from the levy for next year. Am I correct, Clerk?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Get a motion, we have a second. Second by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
This is from 2000, I'm sorry.
It's a 2,600, because of the bond, the way it was issued, it cannot be levied on the taxes, so we have to abate them.
Okay. We've got nothing about this.
If we do this every year from now on. Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Nine ayes and one no.
Thank you very much.
Number five, resolution 2019-044, resolution authorizing a contingent fee for professional services agreement with Azovar Audit Solutions for the city of Blue Island. And Clerk, do you know more information? It's about the water meters audit, right?
It's about, I'm not 100% certain on this one, but it's about where they come in and they audit what taxes we collected and were supposed to collect, so they look...
I know we approved it a while back in finance. I've just been getting a bit of pressure.
Correct. It's been several months, and we pay a percentage of what they save us. It's no cost, they pay a percentage of it. And I don't know that number often.
I just wanted to clarify, because I'm sure other people had the same answer to this question. We need a motion for that.
A motion, we have a second. Alderman Hill, any questions? Alderman, go ahead.
I have a question. I did just a little bit of research into this company, and apparently the city of Freeport quit using them in 2018 because they started charging, they charged a 2.5% fee, and then they, wait, I wrote it down. They started charging a 2.5% credit card fee for payments made with credit cards and a 15 cent per transaction fee.
Yes. Can I see that?
Are we going to be subject to that? I mean, that's why Freeport pulled out.
You know what? I think the gentleman from the company...
I've just seen that too, yeah.
Thank you.
We might need all refresh you here, because it's been a while since we talked about this.
That's why I'm here. My name is Tom Pegg, and I'm from Azovar Government Solutions. I'm the one that sold Freeport, and there is a video out there. So within Azovar's arsenal, we've developed local gov, which is different than the audits. So we were implementing a system where we would do tax and fee administration. So when I presented it to the council, I said there was no fees for the audit. So there are no fees for the audit. It's a contingency-based model. We look and make sure that all the utilities, like Comcast, Nike, or ComEd, are giving you all the money that should be allotted to you. There's a lot of miscodings that happen. That's the audit, that's contingency. If we find nothing, it costs nothing. The local gov part is the tax and fee administration that when somebody does a tax for food and beverage, or whatever you want to think of, a vehicle sticker, and they submit to pay it, there is an administrative fee or a merchant fee, a credit card fee of 2.5% in that case when you do a transaction. That has nothing to do with the audits, you're not doing local gov. It is just the audits. We've done it for over 250 municipalities in Illinois ever since 2005, and it found over $100 million of miscodings. A neighboring suburb, and I have all of you, and I'm from Oak Forest all my life and actually lived in Blue Island in the early 90s, we found revenue, AT&amp;T revenue, in a neighboring community, $42,000 when AT&amp;T miscoded what the village or what the city was paying for that service. So we do payables as well as receivables. We found another neighboring, if you think down Harlem Avenue, I won't say the community, five addresses being calculated to Chicago and not the neighboring municipality in Eidor's records, one of which being a Dunkin' Donuts. So we were able to give that municipality back money that was going to Chicago. So the Freeport thing, yes, it was, it was a misunderstanding, and we tried to negotiate with them. We also said to them we would get rid of the merchant fees, and they didn't do that. We renegotiated with them because they didn't understand what I meant by fees for this as opposed to the audit. The audit, there are no fees.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions?
So we're just using you for an audit? For the audits. Okay. Joliet is one of our local gov customers. If you want to go online and see what we do with them, Joliet is one of our main allies in local gov, tax and fee administration.
There's a motion, there's a second, if there are any other questions? Go ahead.
So there are no fees for the audit itself?
No.
Could it be defined there's a miscoded?
We would like to split with you 55% for the municipality, 45% for Azovar. And when you think of that, when they miscoded a, a utility address for residential, you're thinking $2 to $3 per month. We're also able to go backwards three to four years for back taxes, like with ComEd, we're going for back taxes right now. Um, so it's just to share what we find for a 36-month term in each stream of revenue that we're looking into. So it's putting money back in to the coffers as these people would like, but not costing you anything. You know, you could do it and it would be nothing. You also could not do it, it'd be nothing, but 55% of that revenue for 36 months and then 100% of the revenue after that is money in your coffers.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis?
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita?
Uh, no.
Rita, no. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Eight ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Finally, a resolution 2019 dash 045, authorizing execution of agreement with Metropolitan Industries Incorporated for the monitoring services of Thornton Elevator Tank, the Highland Pump Station, the Vincennes Pump Station, and Meter Vaults. This is the one I was thinking of, yeah. So this also went through finance committee a few months back and it's basically, um, monitoring the, if, if a pump goes down to the cloud and it would notify Jim right away if there's an issue over like on a Christmas day if a pump goes down.
It costs like 45 months.
Yeah, it's hardly anything, it's something we have to renew, it's just a contract we have to renew.
Is there a motion? Second, by Alderman Farrenwald? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis?
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, Alderman?
That's it, aye.
Thank you. Uh, Public Health and Safety Committee?
Uh, Public Health and Safety, we met earlier tonight, um, I'll have those minutes next meeting. Um, the only one item of interest actually that I'd like to get out there is Alderman Farrenwald's leading up this task force about speeding in the residential neighborhoods and he's looking to do like a town hall meeting sometime in January. So he's gonna check with, uh, the city clerk and the attorney to see what we need to, to need to get that set up because we believe it's more than just that street that has the same issues, so that way we can get the word out, hopefully get some people in with some ideas. Our next meeting is set for January 21st, 2020, back there, or out here actually now, I'm sorry.
Could I make a reminder, this was brought up months ago, right after the 4th of July, the fireworks?
Fireworks?
Yeah. So we're gonna try to address that.
Alrighty.
That's been an issue that's been growing and growing to basically almost out of control.
Alright, yeah, that's a good time to start. You know, the beginning of the year, so we'll talk to the police chief and see what we have in fire chiefs that we can get going.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I got a question, uh, Mr. Alderman Klinker. Is it possible that we can have more than just one, uh, town hall meeting in certain areas, like maybe down at the Blue Island Recreation Center? Because like when some of those kids is getting picked up from school district 143 and a half, which I visually, visually see myself, uh, them speeding and things of that nature as well.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with it. Like I said, Bill and Will and Jim Polstraw and Sergeant Sepatsey are the ones that are kinda heading the whole thing up. So Bill's looking at getting ideas going, so I don't see any problem with it. There are a couple of them.
Talked about it for sure.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
No report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is January the 14th at 6 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
Uh, we were supposed to have a meeting tonight, it was canceled for, uh, due to lack of agenda items, so our next, so of course there will not be any minutes and, um, our next meeting is January 21st, uh, 2020, 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. East Annex. Any aldermanic announcements or comments?
Uh, yes, I'd like to say thank you to all my, the Blue Island, um, supporters and donators, um, all my friends and families and to everyone here at City Hall and, um, the various departments for the city of Blue Island. I had a very angel's touch, um, it was kinda low-key this year, there wasn't a lot, um, that was said and, um, but I got a call last minute to do a serial drive as I do every year, took over from when my mom did it and, um, as Alderman Klinker reminds me, which I appreciate. So it was really, it was a very successful, um, uh, drive this year and I truly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, everyone who donated and, um, so do the angel's touch people and of course the recipients of the, um, gifts. So thank you very much and, uh, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, all.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Johnson?
Yes, um, Chief, um, my thing is, I've been asking for this audit pretty much since I've been an alderman, almost 11 years. Is it possible that we can get like maybe a time, time date type of thing on it and that we can keep everybody in the loop about it?
We're trying to shoot before the end of the year, uh, not the end of the year, at least by January, the first two or three weeks of Jan, we'll have something on the table for you guys to vote on.
Okay, um, and the other thing is, is have we had anybody, uh, or any, um, prospects for the financial director's position?
Yes, they've already started the interview process, another one will, I think in the next week, uh, tomorrow in fact, at least tomorrow. So there, and then we'll probably get the finance director involved, uh, when the final candidates are on the, on the block, as they say.
Okay, cause my, the thing is, is that, um, you know, um, we hadn't had a, a report in about six months. I never felt comfortable about really voting for, uh, some of our reports, but definitely since we hadn't had a report in six months, um, like I said, I've been fighting for this thing almost 11 years, for us to have an audit to find out really if we truly wanna know where, you know, how our money coming in and going out and if there is any, if any leaks going in where we can patch them up, um, to, uh, you know, further the city, uh, make the city go forward in a positive manner. I'm not trying to hear anymore about what we don't have as far as finances, cause we can finance other things. We definitely need to finance this so we can understand our own finances.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Uh, we need, I guess, we're, I'm not returning to closed session, correct? So I need, I guess, we'll move on to, uh, the approval, release and settlement of the agreement, the Hyrum versus City of Blue Island and Law, 14L 010312. I need a motion. Motion Alderman Hill, second.
We're not ready to, uh, going into executive session.
Did you say we're not or we are?
No. No.
We're not.
Um, is there a copy of the letter?
Yes.
Probably some people want to see that. Do you need a second?